Good evening, folks. It's Monday, March 4th, 2019, 6:30 PM. This is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the ESC, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. Copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKB, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources who have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted? Great, thanks. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the good and evil in the public, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. My friend Nancy Justman will be here any minute. She had a work thing she was presenting at tonight. She said she'd be here as soon as she could. My friend Tony Schmidt is out of town tonight, and Chris thought it'd be a good idea to appoint Kurt as our acting clerk tonight. Are you willing to do that, Kurt? Great. I love it when people volunteer me for things, too, so... All right, we've got a nice agenda tonight with a lot of recognition. Thank you all for being here. Hopefully, our board members have had a chance to look that over. I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. We will start with recognition of our West Girls Bowling Team with Erin.
Hey, for those of you who don't know me, I'm a junior high school student in Silver.
We have Olivia Burns come up.
I want to congratulate senior Olivia Burns here. Makes me take it for granted. I'm so excited to be here. (audio cuts out)
Very cool. Congratulations, ladies. Very cool. Thank you. We have Olivia Burns come up.
I want to congratulate senior Olivia Burns here. Makes me take it for granted. I'm so excited to be here. (audio cuts out)
Great, let's have the East Girls Bowling Team up. Great, let's have the East Boys 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 Team up. Awesome. Congratulations, ladies. Great, let's have the East Girls Bowling Team up.
(audio cuts out)
I am truly glad to have some of the best, my ladies, boys, and my friends, and I would like to thank all the sports teams that have been able to figure out what's going on with the state of the game. Um, yeah, three years, uh, two years, just not for, uh, talent, um, with, uh, a new model, and that is that. (audio cuts out)
Awesome. Way to go. How about the East Boys Team?
(audio cuts out)
Awesome. Way to go. How about the East Boys Team?
(audio cuts out)
All right, cool. Let's have Sydney Spade.
(audio cuts out)
All right, cool. Let's have Sydney Spade.
(audio cuts out)
All right, cool. Let's have Sydney Spade.
(audio cuts out)
All right, cool. Let's have the Swimming Dive Team up.
Hello, I'm Mr. Coach DeWittman with the Co-op Boys Swimming Dive Team. Um, I'm going to first talk about Kevin Fitzpatrick. He's a sophomore. First stage, he played on the 500 freestyle, which is 20 lengths of the pool, and he seeded ninth with a time of 20. He's a senior with class. Um, he went to state in the 50 freestyle, which is two lengths of the pool. He was seeded 20 seconds with a time of 22.24 seconds, and dropped his time to 22.06 seconds for personal best. Um, he still ended up 20 second place. In the 100 freestyle, Jackson also seeded in 23rd place with a time of 48.95 seconds for 10 lengths of the pool. He, uh, finished in 19th place with a time of 48.70 seconds. I'm really, really proud of Jackson for going on to either the Naval Academy or to West Point, yes, decided to go. So, uh, we're looking forward to hearing his decisions, um, where he started to go. So, congratulations to both of our students, ladies and gentlemen.
All right.
And I'm here to talk about C and D Hart. C and D Hart is a senior from West Bend. That's a great team to do this year. He really let it shine, and that's basically, actually, all three of them have accomplished some exceptional things. He's like a professional. 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 He's like a professional.
Awesome. Congratulations. Let's have the Swimming Dive Team up.
(audio cuts out)
Hello, I'm Mr. Coach DeWittman with the Co-op Boys Swimming Dive Team. Um, I'm going to first talk about Kevin Fitzpatrick. He's a sophomore. First stage, he played on the 500 freestyle, which is 20 lengths of the pool, and he seeded ninth with a time of 20. He's a senior with class. Um, he went to state in the 50 freestyle, which is two lengths of the pool. He was seeded 20 seconds with a time of 22.24 seconds, and he dropped his time to 22.06 seconds for personal best. Um, he still ended up 20 second place. In the 100 freestyle, Jackson also seeded in 23rd place with a time of 48.95 seconds for 10 lengths of the pool. He, uh, finished in 19th place with a time of 48.70 seconds. I'm really, really proud of Jackson for going on to either the Naval Academy or to West Point, yes, decided to go. So, uh, we're looking forward to hearing his decisions, um, where he started to go. So, congratulations to both of our students, ladies and gentlemen.
All right.
And I'm here to talk about C and D Hart. C and D Hart is a senior from West Bend. That's a great team to do this year. He really let it shine, and that's basically, actually, all three of them have accomplished some exceptional things. He's like a professional. 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 He's like a professional.
All right.
And I'm here to talk about C and D Hart. C and D Hart is a senior from West Bend. That's a great team to do this year. He really let it shine, and that's basically, actually, all three of them have accomplished some exceptional things. He's like a professional. 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 He's like a professional.
Very cool. Thank you. Congratulations. Let's have the East Wrestling Team up.
(audio cuts out)
Well, thank you to West Bend, and all the students who have been here today. Congratulations to all the students and all the athletes here, certainly, especially, happy to be here today. There is also a student here, um, who is a javelin junior, she's in the top seven of the country, she's in the top three. She was 61 in conference, second place with a, uh, she's got her, uh, she's on the fourth tournament, so she won the, uh, the tournament. And, uh, she's not second in the team, but she's pretty good for the, uh, the, uh, the state. Uh, we're fortunate, guys, all right, the second one is C and D Hart, and we have people qualified, and we have, uh, first, uh, whether it's a nice crowd, the Foster, Foster, and the 37th, both are seniors, and they're sometimes all kind of late. And that's 66 minutes over the senior year, so they're very well respected. And then, Foster, senior, senior captain, within the second time, he's qualified, he's rated 47 in the tournament, and senior, and I'm not the tournament. There's 105, there are 31, there are 32, there are 20 more, and so, this is... There's also, Mr. Doye, on the, uh, 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 the, pretty prosperous, which is a good thing, but we're looking for students that are below the federal poverty line. So, just as an example, if you are in a family of just one parent and one child, we have to make us in $12,200 per year. So, that number is pretty low, and it doesn't happen a lot in our county. So, what we focused on is we serve those families that are just over those poverty borders, to serve families that are within that 100% poverty level. As you saw in the previous slide, our four-year-old numbers are declining, and that's because four-year-olds have many more options. So, it's a strength. It's the work here at 4K as well, and they're fantastic, and that's, so it's actually a good thing that our four-year-old numbers are declining, and again, we just shift our focus to us three-year-olds. And then, finally, we've seen a decline in parent volunteers. So, we're going to continue to look for new opportunities to create our grants. So, things that exist in the past are more like community gathering things, so that's all I have to read this week.
Matt, do we do any kind of tracking, like from an academic perspective, that says kids who participated in four-year-old Head Start by their third grade, they were reading proficient or, like, is there any academic data to support the early interventions that we as a district have, even just to market or promote the program?
Yeah, so Head Start specifically is really focused on where they were at the beginning and end of the program. After the program, they're kind of moved into a whole district.
I was just curious. Thank you.
Matt, how close are we to capacity in Head Start?
Sure. So, we have two different grants. We have the federal grant, which is 121 students, and then we have a state grant for an extra 20 students. So, we're kind of sitting at about 130 students, so we're nearly full, our middle class rooms are very full. There is a
When would parents start to register for next year?
Sure. So, registration, we have returning families in May, and then we have new families, we have opportunities to apply. Great. Thank you very much.
Next, we're going to talk about career and technical education, and I think Jennifer Martins can introduce that. I don't think that mic's been on all night.
February is CTE month, and I know it's March, but there were a couple of things with all of our weather days, and then also a couple of events that happened that we wanted to actually highlight. On February 18th, the Department of Work Development highlighted the CTE programs at our high school, and Secretary Frostman, Dave, and Visbit, I know Kurt and Joel were able to join us that day. They got a tour, we're very impressed with what they see with our program. And then Jacob, Gitter, and I were just at an event last week honoring Metal Craft of Mayville for their contributions to West Bend, Loyola, and Beaverdale schools, because they are probably one of our biggest contributors, and we want to make sure that they're even. But Mike and Jacob are here tonight to share just a video. I know we've done a slide presentation in the past, so we kind of changed it up a little bit, so.
I went to the digital media teacher at high school, Charlie, and Evan couldn't make it, but they're mine, but they lead a captain class, and I was pretty much
I teach engineering classes here at the high school. The engineering classes are part of the Technology and Education Department. In particular, I teach three different classes. One of them is digital electronics, one of them is Principles of Engineering, and one of them is Introduction to Engineering Design. In those classes, we design, build, and test solutions to problems all year long. So, a lot of it is hands-on, a lot of it is 3D modeling on the computer, a lot of it is simulating circuits, but we're active the whole time. You work on your knowledge, your technical knowledge, and your technical skills, and especially, again, your problem-solving skills during those classes.
My name is from almost, I teach architecture, construction, and engineering classes here at the high school. My construction classes are mostly hands-on classes with an introduction to residential construction, and in my advanced class, we are actually onsite building things for clients of the community. Both of them give you a very good introduction to the profession as a whole, and allow you to explore different options within those two areas. Anybody who enjoys hands-on and problem-solving type classes, I would highly recommend taking these courses and explore different options for them.
Hi, I'm Mr. Bentall, the digital media teacher here at the West Bend High Schools. The courses that we offer are Intro to Digital Media, Intro to Web and App, Advanced Photography, Advanced Video Production, and Advanced Animation. Through these courses, you will learn Adobe Photoshop and Adobe Premiere Pro.
Hi, my name's Mr. Gitter. I'm the manufacturing teacher here at the high school. Manufacturing consists of robotics, machining, and welding. If you like working with your hands, if you like doing some programming and learning about exciting technology, these will be the classes for you. Come and check them out.
Hi, my name is Gerald Sorsy. I'm the automotive instructor here at West Bend High School. We have an Intro to Automotive course, which I recommend for anyone that wants to have an automobile. We're going to do a lot of things in the lab. We're going to be going oil changes, tire rotations, working a lot of hands-on type stuff, so getting you accustomed to working on your own vehicle. We also do some hot rod builds and some high-power stuff, just to get you excited and see the cool stuff that has to come into the automotive industry. So, if you're interested in something automotive-related, come and see us down here in the automotive wing.
Hi, Mr. Blaskowski. I'm one of the tech ed teachers here at the high school. My specific area is graphic communication. Students learn the basic software programs like Adobe Photoshop, Adobe Illustrator, and Adobe InDesign. Students then take the skills and the knowledge that they learn on those programs and create their own products. So, they design things like t-shirts, notepads, coffee mugs, mouse pads. We've got flip-flops, fishing lures, jewelry boxes, all sorts of different products. So, if you're interested in a career in graphic design, printing technology, or you just want to make your own cool stuff, sign up for these classes. So, thank you for listening to me. I'm looking forward to seeing you, hopefully, next fall.
Hi, guys. My name is Ms. Schlatz, and I am a Family and Consumer Science teacher here at the West Bend High Schools. The classes that I teach is all of our design classes. I teach Intro to the Design World, Fashion Design, and Interior Design. Really great classes. You learn some great life skills in this class, regardless if you want to be a designer or not. You're going to learn how to sew a button and use a sewing machine. Our Interior Design class is a TC credit class. One of the things that we do is this project right here, which is Build the House. It's a really great class. I hope that you guys all come in and take it with us and enjoy it. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Sally Hoyer. I am the High School Culinary and Hospitality Instructor. In addition to teaching multicultural foods, which is the class that comes right after personal culinary, I am also in charge of our Pro-Start 1 and 2 classes, who also operate our student-led restaurant, The Nifty Nibble, as part of a lab setting situation. Finally, I do co-op, so I also supervise students who work out in the community in the food service areas. We welcome all of you to come and try our culinary classes here at the high school, and hope that you will find some that you like, and you will stick with it.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Sorsy. I teach the Early Childhood Education classes in the Family and Consumer Science Department. Our objective for the Early Childhood Education classes are to not only teach children how to be good parents and care for children, but also to have the career-based skills. Our intro level course is Parent-Child Development. We also have three advanced-level courses that are transcribed through Moraine Park, also career-based, and we have our Intro to Education courses. So, I hope to see you in my classes.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Holter. I teach in the Business and Information Technology Department here at the high schools. I primarily teach the Business Administration Program, which is a national program that we have adopted for students really interested in pursuing a business career in the future. We also offer IT classes, programming, finance, a little bit of a lot of different areas in the business world. Most of our classes are hands-on and can provide you a good insight to a possible future career.
We have so many amazing opportunities at our high school. I have really got to be in that class. You know, the CTE department is having wonderful, one who ran something, and I'm just amazed at the opportunities that our students have, and I think we're going to have. So, I just think this is the next way to kind of highlight them. I know some of you have been on the tour, if not, I'm going to volunteer, let you guys just kind of pop into their classrooms, because I know when I'm at the high school, I always try to make it into at least one of them, because it's just cool to see the kids in action and all the opportunities they're giving. So, any questions? What do you guys?
Max, could I put you on the spot? I know you're going to the Savannah College of Art and Design, is that correct? Would you share with us how this program influenced you going to college and what you're planning to pursue at college?
So, I'm going to Savannah College of Art and Design. I don't know what exactly, because it's marketing probably, work in advertising, if there's any figures for them. They spend a couple of years all, but we do, um, in
They're part of the production center at the high school, is that right? We do many new things.
Yeah, we do the school news. I worked on that last year, that was the production class. And now I'm just caps on the class, for the other classrooms that may add. This
Guys, that was great. Great video, and you know, when we talk about all the cool opportunities that we have at West Bend that aren't in other districts, that really showcases a lot of them, and I went up that day, Jacob was a part of that and was talking my ear off about a company that he has developed and products that they're actually going to make and sell, and, but not just that, he learns QuickBooks, and he learns accounting, and economics, and all the things that go with it. It's really, really impressive. For board members who haven't been on a tour up there, talk to Don, and we'll get you up there, because it's really, really cool, so.
There are a lot of certain things you can do, and I don't know off the top of my head, and Jacob is, Jacob is, but you mentioned QuickBooks, I know there are those opportunities that make, that help you do quite a few others that our students can, have some, but they can
Great, nice job.
To piggyback, one more story from I took the tour, there were individuals, it's great to see the digital media team actually producing a great promotional video for that. We need to promote it more and more, but there was also an individual that was working at Metal Craft of Mayville, and he was excited. He got an internship there, right? And he's studying and looks forward to graduating and working for Metal Craft of Mayville, getting right out in the workforce, just one of many examples of kids exploring CTE classes, and so thank you for the promotions, and yes, great tour.
I'll just add on, I did reach out to Representative Rick Gundrum, just to thank him for attending that particular day, the CTE, and he was just so impressed with it, and he also acknowledged that he is a huge proponent for developing this and anything he can do within our schools and district-wide to help facilitate these programs, to be sure to reach out to him as well, so. All together, thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Swigert, I'm going to turn it over to you for an update on our policy meeting from earlier tonight.
All right, and the update will be brief. We did meet as a policy committee tonight at 5:30 PM and continued our discussion around Revised Board Policy 345.4A Acceleration, and we're going to be continuing our work, and we'll no doubt see this come back to a future policy committee meeting. That's it.
Great, thanks. Superintendent Kirkegaard?
Senator Gundrum is going to be here on Friday, so he's going to spend the afternoon with me Friday afternoon, and so also, he featured part of our presentation when he was here on the February 18th for our visit, and he highlighted some of the West Bend programs in his update that he sends across the area, and so, very appreciative of the support he gave, and he, like Tiffany said, is a huge supporter of CTE, and so did a very nice job in his article. Couple of quick things. One is, I'm pleased to announce that we have had no snow days since last week when I made that announcement, so we're still on track for the same process that we had before, and hopefully, knock on wood, we have had our last of our snow days, and we have a plan in place. The last comment that I would make, Deb is going to send out a meeting calendar doodle tomorrow to look at a possible committee of the whole for the week of April 8th. And so, April 8th, we would like to have a committee of the whole. Mr. Hamelman will then be presenting the information on the teacher compensation plan. They have completed their last of the work groups, they've had a study, a work group that has got together numerous times, they had the last meeting, I want to say maybe a week ago, two weeks ago, working on that information. We'll present that to you at that meeting, and so we're looking at it as a committee of the whole as the best way for that to happen. So, that's all I had.
Great, thanks. And you said April 8th?
The week of April 8th. It's not Monday the 8th, but it'll be one of those days this week, that week, we'll try to figure out what works best for everybody.
Great, thank you. Looking at our calendar, we've got a couple of referendum open houses. The first one is on March 7th at 7:00 PM at Jackson Elementary School. The next one's at March 11th at 7:00 PM at the high school, and I believe that one meets in the east cafeteria. Our next regular board meeting is on March 18th. Then our next meeting after that is April 1st. The other thing to note on the calendar, for the good of information here anyway, is there's a candidate forum scheduled for three people who are running for school board, which is going to be held at the city council chambers at 6 o'clock on March 19th. Any other questions or comments about our calendar or upcoming events? I will make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c) to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely a personnel discussion.
Second.
Any questions on that motion? We're going to meet upstairs in our normal closed-session room there, and I will take a roll call vote with Kurt? Yes? Yes? All right, we are now in closed session. Thank you. Yeah, I was going to say, for you governmental kids here tonight, you got a good meeting that you attended, because it was a quick one. And we can sign your